It is 6:30. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wattsburg Area School District, where we are student-centered and future-focused for world-class education. This committee meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee of the Board. Just to remind the audience and the public that the format for a committee meeting is a little different than a regular board meeting. We will have a presentation followed by board discussion, and then I will ask for any comments or questions from the public. At that time, I will ask you to use the question-and-answer feature to submit your name and your address, and I will call upon you, and we will limit the comments to this presentation. So having said that, I'd like to recognize the chairperson of our Board, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Josh Paris. Mr. Paris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will call the meeting to order and hand it off to Eric and Ken.
Okay, thanks. So I'll start us out. Over the past eight years, we prioritized a lot of the mechanical systems that were in dire need of replacement and upgrading. We started over at Seneca with the chiller that was replaced on the top of the roof there, because the other chiller was losing compressors. They were blowing up about once every three months. We'd lose one, and it was $75,000 to replace it. So we ended up replacing the whole chiller. Actually, and then before that, we replaced all three roofs on all the buildings. And then, of course, we moved over towards the middle school, because it was over 25 years old, and HVAC technology was old and at end-of-life. So we renovated that system completely, which brings us to our discussion tonight, as we're taking a look at the elementary center. I had asked Eric to put some numbers together. The elementary center is different than the middle school and the high school, in that it doesn't have a centralized chiller. It has about 86 smaller units called heat pumps, and they're spaced out in various locations on the roof of the building. So one heat pump might handle one or two classrooms. So that's tied into a geothermal loop, which is interesting. A lot of people don't realize that that building, very forward-thinking design, that GEO loop, geothermal loop, keeps the water at what? What'd you say, Eric? About 55 degrees?
55, yes, right around there.
So we're only heating the difference, which is a big savings. But the heat pumps are now, like, I think, 27 years old, we were talking. And they're older technology, and we have some money in fund balance that's unassigned. And so I asked Eric to get some pricing on this project. What would it take to update the elementary center and replace all the heat pumps? And tie that in with all our energy-efficient controls? So that's what we're going to talk about here. I can bring up just like an overview. This would be the project at a glance. It shows you the cost of each unit and the number of that type of unit. And of course, these vary in sizes and configuration. That's why there's price variations. Some are big units, some are small units, some are in-between units. And the labor estimate that we got from SCOBEL is around $300,000 to install all these. So this is a project guesstimate. We think it'd probably be safe to set aside $900,000 for this project if we were to move that and commit in capital projects. We think that would take care of unexpected things that you get into with any type of project this big. So that's like the overall price structure there. I can share with you also just kind of some of the issues that we're having. This is a picture of a thermal circuit unit. So you can see there's a lot of debris in there, and that's part of what's happened over the years. We have a lot of debris in the system.
Are you going to share your screen, Mr. Berlin?
Yeah, I thought I did. Hold on a second. Okay. Sorry about that. All right, can you see that?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you can see there's a lot of debris in there that's been brought in. So we'd want to clean all those lines out, of course. And then Eric is proposing some screens and filters to prevent this kind of damage. But it really should look... One more photo.
Those are the circuit setters that control the flow into each unit. And each unit, at this time, is taking in a lot of debris like that, and that's what causes them to fail at this point. They go out on high pressure when they'll get the circulation from the GEO loop.
Yes, so this is the clean side. That's what it really should look like. Now, this is just one of a lot of issues with a system that's this old. You know, certainly not the only reason. But if we don't address this, you know, we're going to get into a nickel-dime situation where we're one-offing and two-offing heat pumps. Or if we do it all at one time, we can get a much better installation price and unit price. So I'll pause right there to see if there's any questions. All right, so the...
Mr. Berlin, this is Gary Jacobs, just letting you know I did get on the conference.
Okay, yeah, and for the board members that don't know Gary, he's one of the engineers at formerly Smart Edge, which is now Stark Industries. And we've really partnered with them over the past eight to 10 years to do a lot of these guaranteed energy savings projects. And Gary's been kind of the head person of all our projects. So he really knows our facilities and what's going to work best for the current design. I will say that this project is not going to run like a traditional project if the board decides to move forward. The supplier of the heat pumps that we'd get the heat pumps from, they're CoStarz-approved, so they're already a low bid. And then SCOBEL, sorry, my dog's barking. SCOBEL is also CoStarz-approved, so we would need to bid their labor.
Ken, if I could interrupt, what we're looking at is, we're looking at this as a maintenance project. These are one-for-one replacements. There's no permits or engineering needed. So it makes it a lot simpler for us to do this project the way it's structured, rather than having the overhead of ESCO or a architect-engineer system.
Yeah, because we had this project quoted through an ESCO last year, and we'll save at least $1.2 million going this route. But we still would have access to engineering consultation with Gary through Stark Industries.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Blazer.
Is there any value to the existing ones? Would there be no value to them other than scrap metal? Or is there anything we're going to get for the 86 existing units?
I would say the labor for them, you know, in removing them, part of their labor project was to take them, they're just going to recycle them. Probably they'll be torn apart, but for us to actually take the time, it's not worth... They have, you know, smaller, there are smaller radiators in them and compressors. Actually evacuating all the... One of the advantages is getting rid of the Freon, and the new Freon is not an R22, which doesn't exist anymore. It'll be one of the newer gases, which is better for the, you know... It's a lot less expensive, and you can actually get it. The R22 is almost impossible to get anymore.
Yeah, so the units we have right now are running the older coolant, right, Eric?
Yes, the Freon is, it's R22.
So part of SCOBEL's sort of reduced labor charge is them recouping some profit off of those?
Yes, the labor charge is about $1,000 less a unit, rather than going through the ESCO. And I think one of that was, one of those reasons where they were getting the scrap, and they're just going to bring dumpsters in and take them away. But they're responsible for evacuating the Freon, which we don't really want to get into anyway.
If I might add, this is Gary Jacobs. We'll also remove the existing controls on the units and reuse those on the new units. We have checked it out, and the new units will accept the existing controls. So that's an additional savings in the project, instead of going with all-new controls.
Also, there is an energy savings cost to it, since the new units are 27 years newer. They have smaller compressors. I think as far as air quality, Gary, weren't these designed to take an R... To take a MERV-13 filter?
Yeah, the new units will have additional energy efficiency just by virtue of being a newer design. And that will save the district about $8,000 to $9,000 a year in electric costs with the higher-efficiency units. Excuse me, and the newer units, when we set out to do this and look at this with the heat pump supplier, we specified units that would handle higher levels of filtration, like with the MERV-13, which is a higher, much higher filter rating than the typical MERV-8. So if there was a desire to get extra filtration for the building, the units will handle that. And then also, they can handle higher amounts of fresh air, too, if desired.
Andy, this is Tara. I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound, go ahead.
Maybe this is for Mr. Berlin or Eric. So their original units we have now, what was the lifespan of them to begin with?
They usually put a 20-year lifespan on mechanical units. Well-maintained units will go beyond that, and we're currently at about a 27-year life on these. And when we approached, we approached a water furnace, who is the direct supplier of the originals. And there, you know, they would be one, almost the same size and exact... They'll fit exactly in the same spot. So the efficiency is better, and like I said, they've been well-maintained. But we could start, you don't see it, but we replaced several motors and things over time. So they're getting to be that at that point. Not saying we can't maintain them, but when we start having major failures, when one room goes down, we have to drain the loop of the whole wing, which causes every teacher to be out of heating or air conditioning for that day to get to one unit.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, like, what's our maintenance on these? Because I see the debris in the one picture that Mr. Berlin showed. So I was just wondering how often we do maintenance, but it sounds like we do that often.
Yeah, that debris is all in the internal loop of water that never gets... It's filled when the system's put together, and it is never emptied out. That water stays in the system the life of it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I mean, this is not the most exciting topic, you're talking about HVAC, but it's so important. All our buildings are designed to be climate-controlled. You know, the elementary doesn't have a bunch of openable windows, and the middle school and Seneca are the same way. But that just translates into a better learning atmosphere for the students and the teachers, because you have that consistent, comfortable temperature all year round. In the scheme of things, like I said, this would be one of the last large mechanical systems that we feel needs attention. And that's not to say that we don't have other things that we're looking at. Eric and Vicky and I prioritized the list many years ago, and we've been kind of working down through that as a master plan of, you know, what we need to tackle and when, and in what order. But the remaining things we need to do are smaller projects. You know, like the elementary center gymnasium needs to be updated. Paving is one of those constant things that, you know, we're probably going to have to put a chunk of money into paving here sooner rather than later, because that's just a never-ending cycle, especially the climate that we have on that lake-effect snowband line, just really beats up our pavement every year. So we do have other projects, but they're smaller, and we think we can fit pieces of them into the budget or use a portion of unassigned fund balance as we need to to tackle those.
I don't think, Ken, I don't think we'll ever see numbers like this again. Not like this, to do a project of this magnitude. We're talking about every heat pump in that building. It's every room, replacing every unit for, you know, just over $800,000. It's almost an incredible price with labor and everything.
Eric, would you mind reminding us what CoStarz means and how that gets us the best price we could possibly get?
Sure, CoStarz is a product, they're from the Department of General Services. They're pre-bid suppliers and labor groups like SCOBEL alike will be pre... They'll pre-bid their services. I think, and Gary, I didn't want to really get into it, but I think you guys had a price last year of $1,000 more per unit. And that's, you know, these are put together, these numbers are put together for school districts to be able to bid or without going out to bid. There are several programs that we use to purchase things through CoStarz and US communities and even Lowe's. I mean, there's a lot of government programs. So we try to take advantage of those, and it saves us the bidding process, and we can also negotiate the lowest price possible with that supplier.
And the... This is excellent. You know, a CoStarz approach for this kind of project is excellent, because it's essentially a maintenance-focused or maintenance-centered project. You don't have intensive redesign work to be done. Like at the middle school, there was a lot of redesign in the classrooms and that for the new HVAC and things of that sort. This is, as Eric has pointed out, mostly a one-for-one replacement of units. And so the CoStarz really helps you get a much better value. You don't need those extra layers that would come with, like, the... You know, when you're working through either the Giza approach, like at the middle school, or a bidding approach with an architect and engineer for this. So you really are getting the best value, I think, that you could find out there for this kind of thing.
An example of that was the middle school. Our original price for ceiling tiles was like $600,000 when we first looked at the project. We ended up doing, in that middle school, we bought the tiles for $22,000, and it was $100,000 labor. You know, that was over a $400,000 savings at the time. So that's the kind of process that they give to us. Vehicles, $50,000 vehicles, we buy them for $26,000 to $29,000, their pre-bid. That's why these programs are so important to use.
Well, and the contractors are very aggressive when they compete for this, the state CoStarz bid, you know, because they want to be the go-to person in their area. And it guarantees them more work, so there's a lot of incentive for them to really bring their costs down as low as possible.
Now, some of the things that Eric and I did do in looking at this, back to the maintenance side of things, what was proposed to include are isolating shut-off valves for each unit, so you don't have to shut down a wing to repair one unit. Filter screens at each unit, so that reduces the problems of the buildup from the ground source, water loop, things like that. And also the added energy efficiency in the newer units. So there are a lot of pluses to the selections that are being considered here.
So the board needs to decide if this is a project that they're willing to go through. I just want to recognize once again, Mr. Berlin, Mr. Schultz, and Gary for joining us tonight. These three gentlemen and the teams that they work with have really done a great job for quality products, saving the district tremendous amounts of money. And it is still quality work, and plus we have guaranteed energy savings from these types of projects that we do. So we have the money in reserve at this time. The board would need to decide if that's something they'd like to do. I would support this project. I would also support transferring the needed funds from our fund balance to a dedicated fund in order to do this. And if the rest of the board is in consensus to do that, then we would add this item to the agenda at our work session to vote on next week. So I'll open it up to the board at this time. Is there any further questions or comments? If you feel this is a good way to go.
Andy, this is Tara. I just have one more question.
Sure, Tara. This is Pound.
So is there... How do I say this? Are there units that don't need replace right now? So if we could, like, incrementally do this over, you know, a two- or three-year contract, getting the same price locked in, because we don't have to replace so many? Or do they all truly need replaced now?
I think your best dollar for labor is going to be all at once. And Gary, he did say that we would have to, these prices were only good for this, till the end of the summer.
Yeah, the current pricing on the equipment is for this year. You'll probably see increased costs next year, maybe not as much on labor, but on materials. It doesn't mean it can't be broken out, but you'll probably see overall a higher project cost as a result.
Okay, thank you.
These units will be removed. They're in the ceiling, between the ceiling, and most of them are in between the ceiling and the grid. So all the grid will be taken down. And as, you know, as they're replaced, then it'll all have to be put back up. To do that in sections over time just seems like a lot more labor. So we couldn't...
So a consensus here before our time runs out for our committee meeting?
It's Josh. I would support this. I think you would see a cost price on these probably double next year with what we're seeing with steel and things like that nationwide. And I'm in shock that we can get this done for less than $900,000, so I'm in full support.
Any other comments from the board?
What would be the timeline if we would move forward on when the project would actually be...
They're looking at six weeks to get the units. If we phased them all in, we would probably be able to, it would be done over the summer and finished before school starts, providing we lock down the labor with SCOBEL. And they don't, you know, they don't get too much work. That's why we're trying to jump on this early in the season. And it is all prevailing rate also, even though it's through the Department of General Services. We'll still have to file with Labor and Industry.
So there was a couple citizen questions here. And I think the one that didn't get answered was from Joy Bible. She wanted to know if this project could be covered by some of the COVID ESSER money. The answer is yes. Upgrading HVAC under the ESSER grant, we're getting about $1 million, is possible. That's an allowable expense. But in putting together our summer program and looking at our exorbitant cyber charter costs, which I'll talk about, we think we're going to have to use most of our... The second portion of the COVID relief to keep our nose above water when it comes to the cyber charter. But I could talk more about that in our meeting.
Is the board in agreement to go forward with the program?
I am, Andy.
Okay.
I'm good, too.
And I guess any objections at this point? We did have two questions from the citizens, thank you. We did have two questions from the citizens. At this time, are there any more questions from our audience? One question was related to a better understanding of the CoStarz no-bid system, and then also the ESSER second-round monies.
Dr. Pushak, it's Amanda. I just had a quick question, as I had read Joy's as well. Does this have anything to do with the ventilation and kind of like the air quality flow, or is that totally separate?
There is some impact from the air quality of it. Will being able to put more air in the building, we would be able to up the CFM that comes in, and we will be able to put better filtration in.
What does CFM mean?
Yeah, that's the volume of air that's coming in per minute. So, yes, more, higher level of CFM is higher levels of fresh air coming into the building. So that's improving the indoor air quality. Also, the filtration, the selections of proposed units were made with the capability of having a higher level of filters, which also obviously take out, you know, stuff you want to filter out of the air to improve indoor air quality as well.
Thank you.
We'd just like to thank Mr. Berlin and Eric and Gary for putting this proposal together and constantly planning for the future of our school district with these big-ticket items. Now that we have the money to do it and we're fiscally sound, it would be a great time to do it. During the work session, I would ask Mr. Paris to request to have this item added to next week's agenda when we get to Buildings and Grounds. And then also, Mr. Pushak will entertain a discussion from Mrs. Bendiger or Mr. Berlin regarding the transfers. We would need to do this as well under finance for the work session. Anything else regarding this project for our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting? Okay, once again, thank you for everyone who attended. Please stay on. We are staying live. This committee meeting is now adjourned, and at 7 o'clock, I will open up the work session. So thank you, everyone. The committee meeting is now adjourned, and in three minutes, I will open up the work session. Thank you. So thank you, everyone. The committee meeting is now adjourned and in three minutes I will open up the work session. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Watzburg area school district where we are future focused and student centered for a world-class education. The board work session for March 8th, 2021 is now called to order. One citizen has signed up to address the board this evening. Should any other citizens wish to address the board, I would ask that you please use the question and answer feature to submit your name and address to provide comment to the board. And please be reminded the question and answer feature is not to be used as a running monologue during the meeting. It is only to be used once recognized by the president, um, or to object to a perceived violation of the sunshine act. At this time, if you're able, please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, may we have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Blazer.
President.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
President.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Pound.
Here.
Mr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here. Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Ken Berlin for our school reports. Mr. Berlin.
All right, this evening, um, I know there had been some questions about our coach evaluation process. Uh, so I'm, I'm just going to ask Mr. Carter and Mr. Miller to talk, uh, to speak to that and just kind of go over the, the process and how that's handled. Um, so I'll turn it over to those two gentlemen.
Mr. Carter and Mr. Miller, good evening.
Hi, this is Mr. Carter. Um, I did make a little PowerPoint that I'd like to share. Is it all right if I go ahead and share my screen? All right, so we are just going to discuss quickly the coaching evaluation process and how we came about it. On the purpose, there's really four reasons that we came up with the process. Obviously, one of them is to help our coaches improve on their coaching abilities and their performance. We want to increase the effectiveness and efficiency within the sport. Also, just overall with the athletic department and community. We want to find out the areas of strengths and the areas of weaknesses so that we might be able to improve and to assist in the decision-making process regarding employment as a coach within the district. But those are the main reasons why we came up with the evaluation form that we use. The main areas that we evaluate would be, uh, effective and timely communication, the administrative responsibilities, the relationships, and then the coaching performance as a whole. We just use a number scale, one, two, three, and four. One's good, two needs improvement, three would be unsatisfactory, and four just means we didn't observe it throughout the season. The way we collect the data, um, this is done through multiple ways, obviously. Observing practices, kind of like walkthroughs with the teacher. We may walk through a practice, um, watching games, you know, we are able to see a lot of games this year, especially just watching games online. Just the different administrators, it may not always be myself that makes some of these observations, it may be the principals. They might be at games and then you might be walking through practices. Then we do take input from stakeholders when appropriate. And then we will get, just looking at in the future, like this is the first time we've used these. We'll look at previous evaluations and compare where they are and what they wanted to work on and things like that. So how's the process done? Uh, at the beginning of each season, I have a coaches meeting with all the coaches. We go over the season. So this is where we can talk about some of the expectations. I pass out any of the documents that are going to be needed throughout the season, answer questions and things like that. Then throughout the season, we will, you know, the principal and myself communicate with each other throughout the season, kind of go over what the coach is doing. And then after the season, the coaches are given an, an ability to complete a self-assessment. Um, it's going to be emailed to them and then they can fill it out. And then when we have our end of the season coaches meeting, that's one of the things that we will go over. So I will fill out that evaluation form, which I'll show you in a minute. And that's when I go over it. I fill it out first and then when I meet with each coach, I kind of go through the evaluation with them. Uh, when that's all done, they're just filed away. Again, just kind of similar to how a teacher's evaluation would work. And then if the coach doesn't like it or has, wants to appeal it, they can appeal the evaluation by submitting a letter to myself or the athletic director. So that's pretty much the process. It is very similar to how teachers are observed. Um, like I said, we go through the evaluation process, you sit down and meet with the coach and then you go over it. You have walkthroughs throughout the gyms or the fields, you watch the games and then take input as needed. So the things, let me bring up the evaluation form itself. So these are some of the subtopics under each of the main headings. Like communication. Yeah, but we ask the coaches to have parent meetings at the beginning of the year. Just dealing with schedules, things like that. They have administrative responsibility. You know, each coach has to complete a coaching certificate program that's done online. Um, they need to, head coaches need to attend PIA meetings. Relationships, you know, we want them to be punctual on time, showing interest in their academic as well as their athletic abilities. It's good to have a nice relationship with the media. After games, coaches need to submit their, uh, results to the media. Coaching performance, these would be the X's and O's, how well they can run a practice. It also talks about being positive, being a role model. Offseason workouts, things like that. And then the safety and discipline, that's kind of, you know, nowadays with COVID, making sure all the kids got tested, water breaks to supervise the locker rooms and the areas, making sure parents know if an issue has arisen. Things like that. Here's the self-evaluation that can, will get emailed out before I meet with the coaches. I don't know if Mr. Miller's on or if he has anything else he would like to add to this.
No, not at this time.
Okay. That's pretty much the process and the form that I use.
Mr. President, this is Tara. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mrs. Pound, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Carter, at the beginning of your presentation, you talked about stakeholders.
Yep.
How, can you define who those people would be?
As in like having input?
Yes.
It could be teachers, administrators, it could be parents. Basically, anyone that has a concern.
So do we wait for concerns or do you proactively go talk to the parents and the athletes and the teachers to get input? Cause I would hate to wait for a concern to arise if we were being proactive. That would be, I guess, a preference. So you don't get feedback from the parents of the coach or the parents or the kids or the teachers for input to this assessment?
Uh, no, no, I do not.
Okay. So how do you evaluate? If you go to the, back to your, um, communication, I don't think it was this one. Can you go down a little bit on the evaluation? Like the relationships, how are you actually knowing if they're communicating effectively with the athletes and the parents? If you're not getting any feedback from them?
Generally, when things aren't happening is that's when the feedback comes. Like if, if kids didn't get schedules or they didn't know about practice times, we would, I would definitely hear about it.
Okay, so you're, you're waiting, you're reacting instead of being proactive. Like, okay. That answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would add though that, you know, this is how all school employees are, are observed. Um, you know, it's, it's an HR function. Um, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't gather specific information when we observe teachers from parents or students, but we certainly stay abreast and people do communicate with us frequently. Um, if they have any type of concern.
That's a great point, Mr. Berlin.
Right, that's, that's on the re, the reactive side though. You're not, you're not soliciting feedback proactively so you don't have to go into reactive state is just my point.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. President.
Before you do, Mr. Blazer, Mr. Carter, could you please describe the process, um, for when the athletic director may be a coach and how he is evaluated?
Yep, um, so I was obviously in the case of myself, coaching girls basketball. Mr. Miller will complete this observation and form for myself. It's not like I give myself any kind of ratings or do any of that on my own. So Mr. Miller will complete that.
Thank you. Mr. Blazer.
Well, you stole one of my questions, so thank you. Um, uh, but the, um, I guess what I wanted to better understand because, you know, as school board members, we're all obviously members of the community. Um, and while we all know that we direct, uh, concerns about teacher, uh, performance or administrator performance to Mr. Berlin, uh, to, uh, handle as HR. When we hear about coaching concerns or questions, we similarly should refer those to Mr. Carter or refer those to Mr. Berlin to go to Mr. Carter, just to clarify where we should direct those questions and concerns about coaching.
If it's a concern that's brought to the board, Mr. Blazer, we would use our communication policy that we had just, approved last month. If it's a concern that you have as a parent or as a, uh, acting in your board capacity, but as a parent of an athlete, then you would take those concerns first to the coach, then to the athletic director, then to the building level principal. That would be the chain of command there.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Uh, and then Mr. Carter, I think, I want to think back, this probably was before I joined the board. You, you and Mr. Miller had done a presentation back before the athletic, uh, facility upgrades. It, it entailed, I remember details on number of participants in different sports and sort of some of the history of how the athletics had gone. And in that presentation, I remember you talking about going forward, you wanted to, I think, uh, set in place some policies about making sure that the head coach at the high school level worked with all levels of the same program underneath them. Worked with the middle school, worked with any elementary or club level programs. I guess I just wanted to hear, is there any feedback on how is that going? Have, have you been able to work on that, uh, as far as improvements? Uh, you know, and, and is there, are the head coaches of each varsity sport acting as sort of the overall sports organizer and leader?
I think there definitely has been some improvement. Uh, we just had our spring coaches meeting last Monday. And again, that was brought up and I reinforced the idea of they do need to be involved in their whole program. Uh, I just look at like just over the past year of football. Uh, our new football coach has started a flag football program all the way down to the elementary school program. Um, trying to think what our, uh, baseball coach has started a seventh and eighth grade club team. So they are, you know, the coaches that we are hiring now are being told, and I think they are understanding that in order to build a program, you do need to establish those younger grades. So I think it is something they're consciously working on and I know we keep enforcing it whenever we meet with the coaches.
Thank you.
Dr. Pushak, this is Amanda.
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
Just as a follow-up to what Jeremy asked, I just, uh, Mr. Carter, has there been any consideration of actually including that as part of the evaluation of what they are doing with the program from the top down?
It's, it's a good question. I don't think that, and it's not on our form. Um, I guess that would be, is it part of their duties as a coach? Or is it just something we're hoping and wanting them to do? So it's something that can definitely be looked at. I would just have to make sure it's in, within my scope to evaluate them on that if it's not really part of their job description, I guess, if that makes sense. Cause this, this form is, like I said, is less than a year old, so it can still be modified and always looking for improvements.
Any other questions or discussion from the board?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Sean.
Yes, Mr. Mattson.
Yes, and actually I was the one that actually asked to have this done and I appreciate it, Steve. Thank you very much. Um, I guess a lot of the reasons why I had asked this and yes, Jeremy has said it, Amanda has, uh, asked those questions. Building the programs, yes, we, don't get me wrong, I am absolutely all about the academ, uh, academic side of the kids and learning and all that kind of good stuff. But then I'm also very passionate about the sports programs that we have. Because I know this school has a plethora of talented, very talented athletes and students in our school. And I, I want the best for all of them. So I guess that, that's where I kind of struggle is, um, where we stand on building this program and all the programs for all the sports. Um, cause I'm constantly seeing or I'm doing in my part here, a lot of coach turnover. So I guess that's where, where, what worries me the most or a lot of coaches switching around. So, you know, building that program and how we move forward, there's no longevity with a lot. I mean, yes, you have been with the girls for a long time and, you know, I'm seeing with track and field and, uh, Mrs. Cage and all that kind of good stuff. So I guess that's where I was kind of leaning towards the, um, coach turnover and then the building, like Jeremy had mentioned also of the programs, how we can add that in there and, you know, get things going. Because I, I've seen it and parents have come to me and asked me about it too. We, we're losing good athletes to other schools or they're not playing or, you know, they, they give up because of certain situations that do happen to them while they're out there on the court, the field, wherever, so be it. So I guess that's where I want to kind of go with this. And yes, you do have my full support, but I want to, you know, uh, hear what we can do to make improvements, I guess.
You asking for improvements at the younger levels?
Well, anywhere, you know, going through, like we were talking about building the programs if we can in, in to that. Whereas, you know, like you've done, I know and mentioned in the past where you're building the basketball programs all the way down to the little kids and stuff like that. Football's going all the way down. Um, I'm seeing good things with the new softball coach and hearing great things with him coming down. So yes, I would love to see that incorporated into this somehow, you know, to, just to make sure that we build the programs and they are where they should be.
And I, you know, and I can, I could just add, uh, Mr. Mattson, that the things you're seeing, that, that positive building from the bottom up that's starting to occur, that's not an accident. I mean, but we, we've recruited some of these teachers that also had, um, excellent coaching credentials, you know, that we're, we, and, and that was part of the reason for doing early retirement incentives is we want to get younger teachers in there that, that are at that point in their life where they can, they can commit that evening time. You know, so we're working that side of the equation. Uh, salary is something that we just addressed in the most recent teacher, um, contract that we settled. Uh, we bumped the entire pay scale up, um, for all the coaching staff, which had not been done, I think, in over a decade. Um, so in a, people, we were asking people to be a head coach for a couple of thousand dollars. You know, at some point, that, that was, wasn't worth it. So I think we've made some improvements there that, you know, some structural uh, improvements there that should improve the coaching staff and the longevity of the staff in those positions.
Absolutely. I totally agree 100%. I do see that process beginning and that's where I want to keep going from here. So yes, absolutely.
I'm definitely willing to add that part of building programs into the evaluation. Obviously, it is one of the best things any coach could do for their program.
So true, so true. So true, so true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Pushak, it's Amanda. May I ask another question?
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
So if a coach doesn't receive a good evaluation, understanding that several of our coaches may also be teachers, what happens then? I mean, can you ask a coach to step down? I mean, what, what are the possibilities if someone does not, is falling in the unsatisfactory category? For example, I'm not saying anyone is, just playing out a scenario.
Right, so the practice we employ there is every coach is, is re-approved every year. So that's, they're not, they're not, they're not permanently put in that position. And we can and have done it quite frequently, open a position. We tell somebody, hey, we're going to open your position advertiser, welcome to reapply. So that's, that's one of the, our mechanisms for making sure that, you know, that if a coach isn't working out, you know, that there's a process to go about addressing that.
Okay, that makes sense. And I know that we had voted on that, you know, for the other seasons. I guess I just wasn't sure how they got from like this point back onto there. So that makes sense. Thank you.
And can I also add that, you know, Mr. Carter and I work really hard at, you know, it's an overused term sometime, but we have an open door policy with our coaches. When our coaches are, are always coming in, talking to us and that's, that's a really valuable part of the feedback. You know, that we can talk to them and they can talk to us anytime they want. And it really helps open those lines of communication and, you know, a lot of times we can nip any problems in the bud. You know, if the coach has a question, hey, can I do this? Can I do that? You know, and, and if it's something outside of the realm we're comfortable with, then, you know, we can say, well, no, you know, we prefer, we prefer you do it this way. Or, you know, you know, we, we bounce ideas off each other. So, you know, we, I, that's a, and it's not written in the, in the evaluation so much. But it's something that really, you know, is helpful with our coaching.
Any further questions from the board? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Carter and Mr. Miller for presenting. We do understand the, the benefits of extracurricular activities with academic performance. And all of the comments brought forth tonight are all for the benefit and purpose of improving or enhancing what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it. So I thank you for sharing that information with us tonight. Okay, Mr. Carter, if you could unshare your screen, please? And we're back on our agenda. Any further school reports, Mr. Berlin?
Uh, no, none at this time.
Okay, thank you for arranging that for us this evening. No further citizens have signed up to address the board. We have one person on the board, that's Danny Carter, who will be limited to 10 minutes to speak. Mr. Carter, you're recognized. Once your microphone is activated, you'll have 10 minutes.
All right, Danny Carter, 14370 Lowville Street, Wattsburg, PA 16442. So I'm going to touch a couple bases since you guys were talking about the sports. With your open door policy, I don't know if you guys are actually just talking about this for the benefit of being in front of the board or if it's something you're actually going to imply, because I know a handful of coaches have reached out to the athletic director and it took over two weeks to get a response for something. So I don't see how you're going to say you have an open door policy, but yet an email takes two weeks to answer or whatever. You get paid to do that job at $60,000 a year. Also.
Mr. Carter, please make your comments general, not directed towards anyone, please.
I'm talking, thank you. Can I add that time back?
Mr. Carter, I run this meeting.
I don't, I am running.
I run this meeting, you do not run it.
Do you not run?
Please, please turn off his microphone for a minute, stop the time, turn off the microphone. Mr. Carter, you will abide by the rules that we have set forth in policy 903 or your comments will be terminated. You do not get to say whatever you want for 10 minutes. I run this meeting, you do not, you will abide by our meeting rules and by the board policy or you will not be permitted to speak. Do not address individual people, do not discuss specific situations. You know how to address those and it is not the purpose of this public comment. So if you continue to speak, you abide by the rules, you may have your 10 minutes. If you do not abide by the rules set forth in policy 903, you will not be permitted to speak. Please activate his microphone. Mrs. Bendig, are you able to activate Mr. Carter's microphone?
I have it unmuted on my side.
I got it.
Okay, let's start the clock again. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
So do you not write the job descriptions when you're posting these? Because I mean, I'm assuming that's what part of your job is to write the job description. So you're asking the coaches, this is what we're expecting, this is what we are expecting from you. So let's see, this is what we can get from you. To build the programs, they need budgets. Bottom line, you can't expect a high school coach to blow his budget on a seven and eighth grade and still have budget for the high school as well. It's, it, it just can't be done. You're talking budgets, once again, you're building the greatest complex. Where's the batting cages at? They, they've been asking for years. I mean, that's not, that's not that big an expense. I mean, for, if you wanted to go brand new, $3,000 would get you brand new. So, I mean, you, you want to get all these programs building, that's how you're going to get them. You've got to start showing your interest in it. Building a complex is great, that's for show. But that doesn't show that you're actually putting forth the time for the athletes themselves. Without a batting cage, when they go to every other school and there's a batting cage, two batting cages, and we have none between two teams, softball and baseball, there's none. But yet you're buying bleachers that nobody's really sits in for softball and baseball. There's no handicap access to the baseball field. I, you had all that paving done, where is the handicap access to the baseball field? That's a huge violation. You can't, if people in a wheelchair are disabled, can't get to the ball fields, what good is the bleachers when they can't even get to them? So, I mean, there's a handful of things right there alone. If you want to put the money where the mouth is, start doing budgets for seven and eighth grade teams. You have an high school coaches run them so they can obviously handle the, the money and know where it needs to go. So there's a handful of questions there for you. And then, now I'm going to get back on topic for what I actually came for. For taxes, the grades, I think we're paying way too high a taxes for the education that the kids are getting. I wonder know why the teachers are talking personally, and I've heard it from numerous students, numerous parents. Teachers are talking for 15 and 20 minutes about their personal lives, about this and that, or letting the kids just go play on their phone for 15 to 20 minutes instead of teaching them at the end of class. Why are we not utilizing that time for these kids to be taught the education? That's the reason why the test scores are the way they are. It's not because the kids don't want to learn, it's because they're not being taught. I mean, if their kids are, the teachers are giving them 20 minutes to play on their phones at the end of class, I can understand here and there, we finish up this lesson, here's a break for you. But every day on a consistent basis or every other day or whenever their A and B schedule is now, that's another part of the reason why they're not doing as well, because these kids aren't looking that far ahead. When they have a test in geometry on Friday, but they didn't have that class until Wednesday, Thursday night homework, when they had science and biology, that's all they're worried about. So when they finish science and biology, they're not thinking about that test that they have going on Friday. They have no idea, they're not worried about, because their homework is done to them. Now all of a sudden, oh man, I'm in school Friday, oh, I have geometry today. Oh, I'm not ready for the test because of blah, 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 because I didn't think about studying it. So I don't know, I mean, whoever thought of the A and B schedule is whatever, it is what it is. But that's the reason our tax dollars or education aren't going as well as they should be going. I mean, you guys want to talk about Fairview and this and that, their test scores prove their tax dollars. So my biggest concern tonight is I want to know why you have staff members in the restrooms looking over the stalls at students? Why they are using those? If they're vaping or something and you want to pat them down when they come out of the stalls.
Mr. Carter, again, these are, these are inappropriate.
I asked for a.
They're, they're inappropriate.
No, they're, I'm asking why these students are being looked at in the stalls. They're using.
You're making unsubstantiated claims.
I'm not making it, I have proof and evidence of this. I've not, did I mention any names? No, I did not. I asked why they are doing, why are kids being looked at in the stalls? If they're not, if they're vaping or whatever, you wait until they come out of the stalls and then you can pat them down and do whatever. There's no reason for anybody to be looking into the stalls unless they're asking for help or they can physically hear somebody being hurt or somebody's in trouble. That I can understand, but there's no reason if they're doing something illegal, you can't wait until they're done before that. Because to me, that is a violation of their rights and everything. And however you want to say and however you want to do, that's fine, because I'll just bring it up to the state and have them deal with it.
Mr. Carter.
It's a violation of their students.
Okay, Mr. Carter, please stop for a moment. Let's stop Mr. Carter's mic and his timer, please.
Yeah, Mr. Carter, if you know those things are happening and you have proof, how come you're not coming to the principal with that or coming to me with that? That's unexcusable in my book.
I'm not dealing with you because I tried for a private meeting and every time I've talked to you, you've always tried just brushing me off, brushing me off. So I've actually put it through the state and have them to handle it, because you guys cannot run, you guys do not try and actually do a proper investigation. You do it one-sided and that's it. You don't try to actually investigate it the way it should be investigated. So that's the reason why I asked for the private meeting last week or last month, you guys denied me. So that's the reason why I'm pushing everything to the state and have them do an external investigation and let them see what they decide.
Yeah, Mr. Carter.
That's what is acceptable.
Mr. Carter.
You guys want to talk, cut me off every time I try to say something, that's the reason why. I asked to talk to you guys as a whole, but nobody wanted to.
Stop his clock and turn his microphone off for a moment, please. Uh, Mr. Carter, I, I'm not going to sit here and have you cast, you know, unverifiable conspiracy theories that myself, the, the, the rest of the school administration, the, the board members or teachers. That, that's not the purpose of this, this section of the meeting. We want to hear legitimate concerns that you might have. But y, y, you're kind of wandering into this territory where you're cat, painting with a broad brush. And, and yes, the Department of Ed did get your complaint, they did contact me, they did look into it. And I just got a letter back from them saying it was completely unsubstantiated and inappropriate.
You can reactivate Mr. Carter's microphone for his final three minutes. Thank you.
I will have, do you want me to have the parents come in and talk to you about this? Because what you did was they sent the student home for a half a day and depriving him of his education. Instead of actually dealing with it, they literally told the parent, we don't want to deal with this, you can go home for the rest of the day. That's what happened. I will make sure I have the parents have, if you want them to come in, do you want them to write a statement? Or we're just going to finish going through with the state, because you're trying to say these are accusations, they're not accusations. These are facts that a student has been told that, that is what happened to the student. So don't try and say that it's, I'm just making conspiracy theories or things of that nature. This is not what I'm here for. And this is a true concern of mine. I want to know if this is a habitual thing or if it was a one-time thing. I'm trying to help nip it in the butt. So that's what I'm trying to do. You guys are trying to just say, well, oh, it's a conspiracy, because it's everything you guys do is always want to cover everything up. Everything is always covered. It's not actually exposed in the investigation. Oh, well, we didn't find anything, we didn't do this, we didn't do that. But I'll make sure I have the parents, do you want them to come in? Or do we just go through the state? However you decide. Since it's a conspiracy, I can actually have them come in and talk to you, because, I mean, I know the parties involved know what was happening and what happened and what they actually did for this investigation supposedly that had happened. So if you really want, however you want to play it out, it's fine by me. So, and that is what these meetings are for, for parents and community members to bring concerns to the board. So you guys can process this and see what's actually happening, what is going on in the school. That's the whole purpose of the school board meetings, not just to run the school, but to hear the concerns. That's why you have the questions and concerns and the comments from the, the parents and people who signed up to be on the board or to be on the agenda or to choose to speak, because they are bringing their concerns to you so you can be proactive instead of reactive. But again, like you said, everything I'm doing or saying is a conspiracy. But we'll make sure that I have the parents file formal complaint through the states and have them actually go through the state police and file a formal complaint with them. So then they can do a formal investigation on this conspiracy theory of their child being looked at while he was using the restroom. So other than that, I have my activity buses. If you want to get programs up, get the activity buses going. There's a lot of single parents and a lot of parents who can't get their kids to school or get them and pick them up. So let's do the activity buses. Thank you.
And your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Carter. And I'm sorry, the audience had to be subjected to that. Thank you, Mrs. Bendig, for your assistance with the microphone. No other guests or citizens have signed up to address the board, so at this time we'll continue on with our agenda. Brings us to the superintendent's report. The chair recognizes Mr. Ken Berlin, superintendent of schools for his report. Mr. Berlin.
Thanks, Dr. Pushak. Uh, so I'm going to put up a presentation here. Okay, so there's just a couple of things I want to cover. First of all, I'll give my usual update on COVID, which is very good news. And then I want to talk a little bit about cyber charters and some of the efforts to reform that, that are being talked about right now. So right into our numbers, these continue to decline. We're getting very close to those percentage thresholds where we'll have moderate spread. So this is very encouraging, down from a month ago pretty substantially. And then this is just a snapshot, I, I started putting together more stats, but there's really not much COVID activity, knock on wood, in the school right now. No positive cases in the past 14 days were reported to us. And only 21 people have been quarantined or ended quarantine at some point during the 14-day look back. And then currently quarantined people, only four at the, at the present time. This was as of yesterday when I looked at the database. So that's excellent news. It, it seems that there's some light at the end of the tunnel and, you know, the, I, I think morale is, is up because of this. This is interesting, you know, I, I've been kind of keeping everyone abreast of our efforts to keep kids in school. And you can see, here's the statewide statistics. Only 24% of the 500 school districts in Pennsylvania have their kids in school full-time. And we're included in that percentage and we've been doing that with our elementary kids from the beginning of the year. One, one of our major concerns was that our elementary students that are in the primary reading, learning window did not lose out, because that, that could be devastating to a child and to a whole cohort of students as they move through the system with a lack of reading ability. So we feel pretty good about accomplishing our objective there proactively. Hybrid, there's 44% of the schools in hybrid and then 32% are totally remote. Those are mostly in large urban areas. And I, I think, you know, their case number is probably, it makes more sense for them to be totally remote rather than the risk safety, but hopefully more schools will get back in session. So that's just a little, a little look back there. This is our chart that shows Erie County versus the number of cases in the district. Again, our caseload is negligible. This is the COVID sewer study data and this is all pointing downwards again. And then I'll look back from last week to the most current week's data. You can see we're up a little bit. But overall, in zone four where we're at, we're down to 9% of the cases, which is excellent. That was 13% just a couple of weeks ago. And then there's a 20% chance that you'd have a positive case per 50 people at an event. And that's come down substantially since last month as well. So I'll just pause there, that's just kind of my quick run-through of the COVID numbers. So I'll just pause there. That's just kind of my quick run through of the COVID numbers.
Mr. Berlin, could you please go back to the slide where you have what our history has been, including the state numbers? I would, I would just like emphasize and remind people that these are tough decisions that the board made. We had talked about, we weren't health professionals to make these decisions. But if you look at the decisions we made and the cautions we took, we are far and away have more full info, in person, full instruction than, than a lot of other places, including the local area. And you know, at the time, half the people wanted their kids in school, half the people didn't. And we really tried to make good decisions and I'm really proud of the decisions that we made. The recommendations the administration made, the input from our parents at all of our meetings. We really did try our best to take in account parents' concerns and then do what's best for the largest group of students. And if you look at that green, you know, our K to six population, except for maybe three or four weeks, has been in person. And as we had said, that was our focus, that, that learning age, that learn to read age. Um, and I'm, I'm just very proud of our district, um, the whole way around, particularly related to this item. So I just wanted to highlight that again and thank Mr. Berlin and the administrators, working with the other staff and faculty in the district with all of our, you know, we're, we're here to educate kids and then this is something else that comes along with it. And I think we're doing a nice job. So. But thank you again. And any questions on that part of Mr. Berlin's report from the board?
Yeah, this is Tara. I just have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
Uh, Mr. Berlin, how did we compare to Fort LeBeuf coming in with the first lady, representing and recognizing that school district for low cases? I think we were pretty competitive in that space. So I'm not sure how she, she went there and not to our school district.
Yeah, I, I, I had that same thought. I mean, and I don't know how they selected Fort LeBeuf, but no one contacted us for any statistics. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I would venture to say we've fared better than all the other school districts as far as keeping our cases down and keeping our kids in the school buildings. I mean, no one's even come close to the amount of in, uh, class in-person instruction we've been able to give to our students during this, this time.
Yeah, I would agree. It was, it was quite surprising to see Fort LeBeuf on the news. And I'm like, well, wait a second, we're, we're like way up there. So I didn't know if they filled out a form or had back, apparently had backing from somebody, but that was quite interesting.
Yeah, a lot of those political visits, you know, they, they come about through, through channels that, that we might not be privy to.
An excellent observation. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to move on. Ryan Bizarro, he's a, he's our, one of our House representatives from Erie County. He is the, the chairperson of the House Democratic Policy Committee, which is a very powerful committee. They have a lot of sway over how things get done and, and what type of legislation gets prioritized. They held a hearing last week on the COVID and charter school crisis. And I've talked about the charter school issue many times. But he had invited me and another local superintendent, Rick Scaletta, to speak at the hearing. So I, I, I had prepared testimony. I won't go through that, but I'll just go through a few of the slides and give you the highlights of what I shared, you know, with, with these representatives. So we'll move right into that. You know, the, they first wanted to know, you know, what, what have been some of the biggest challenges with COVID and distance learning? And I told them, well, the first hurdle out of the box was internet access. And well, only about 50% of our families in the district have internet access. And we had to invest a lot of the, our federal cares money to supply everyone that needed a hotspot about. And we have over 350 out right now, um, you know, in case we did need to go remote. But you can see that by the end of the year, you know, we'll have spent $188,000 roughly on hotspots throughout the pandemic. Now, we're lucky that, that we got COVID relief money to help us with that cost or we would have been in a, a world of trouble. Uh, this is a, just a seven year look back at the, our tuition. You can see how it's just skyrocketing, uh, our, our tuition costs. Um, and we even, we even recaptured a few students in our own cyber program here at the beginning of the year. And yet our overall costs continue to rise at an unsustainable rate. If I walk back even farther to like 2005, we only paid about $150,000 roughly in cyber tuition. And this year we're going to pay nearly a million dollars in cyber school tuition. Uh, and one of the things there that you have to understand is that is only about 60 students. And like I've said before, we send 60 students to the tech school for in-person learning and equipment and state of the art instruction, and that only costs about $350,000. And this is just a look at that difference that I've talked about before between regular ed, cyber tuition or charter tuition and special ed. And again, these costs are just mind boggling, 20 some thousand dollars for a special ed student. And the, the crime there is they're, they're pocketing the profit. I'll talk about that in a second, but they're not providing the services that those students need. So what do we, what do we get for a million dollars in Wattsburg? Well, here's a breakdown. And if you measure that in academic performance of, of cyber charters versus Seneca, we don't get much. In fact, you can see that Montessori Regional Charter, which is an in-person, an in-person charter on the other side of town, they put up one, one gold met. Uh, and then the Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School put up a Met goal in, in English. But, but that's it. Overall, these are failing organizations and you can see the bottom line to the district's almost a million dollars. Uh, you know, and I want to, I want to talk about tuition here. We are using Fuel Ed this year and you know, we've had some issues with it. We use that for our own cyber charter. We, we, we're looking at, um, another platform for next year. But just to focus on that Fuel Ed system, it's the same exact system that this Insight PA Cyber Charter School uses. The exact same system. We're paying, when we look at our Fuel Ed subscription, uh, and you know, that, that platform is overseen by our teachers that we already employ. So it only costs us, get this, $1,300 roughly per student. One Insight Charter, Charter can, can charge us, uh, between 13 and 20 some thousand per student. Now, just looking at these numbers, they must have two regular ed students at 13 and some change. That puts them at 26. But you know, here's their academic performance for $26,000. That's what, that's what those, those folks got. So that's just outrageous. I shared that with, um, the, the committee and that I, I got the most questions about that. They just couldn't believe the difference between the actual cost to teach cyber online that we can do versus what the cyber charters are doing. And in some cases, the exact same platform. Uh, I shared with them this 2016 study. Uh, and basically it compared 17, uh, different state cyber charter schools. And when they studied Pennsylvania, they found that kids in cyber school received the equivalent of 101 fewer days of instruction and reading and 167 fewer days in math compared to students enrolled in a traditional 100 instructional day program e- every day all year long. So they're essentially learning nothing in these cyber charter schools and taxpayers across the Commonwealth are paying the bill, which is approaching about $3 billion at this point. It's 2, 2.6, I think was the, the figure I heard the other day. This is the most egregious part of, uh, cyber charters in my mind. I, I just, I pulled this off the Pennsylvania Department of Ed website. And this is the line item for their 17, 18th school year for advertising. Look at this. Almost a, a little over $9 million they spent on advertising. That shows you how aggressive they are at recruiting students to siphon more taxpayer money. And you can see the difference between what it costs to educate and what they can charge. That's directly turning into profit at student expense, uh, which I, I find, uh, to be unethical in my opinion. Um, and then I, I looked at PA Cyber Charter's budget, year and budget report. And again, these are all on a pencil, the Pennsylvania Department of Ed website. And this is really eye popping. You can see, and this is the largest of the 14 cybers in PA, by the way. In 1819, they made a profit of $24 million. And we don't make a profit. We don't run a profit model. The, the dollars we collect, uh, from taxpayers are spent on our kids. But this is probably the, the most egregious. Their fund balance, that's uncommitted money, like a savings account is up to $90 million as of 1819. $90 million of money that was meant to educate kids is sitting in a fund balance, some, somewhere in a bank. Which I, you know, that's just unfortunate. If we had an extra nine million, uh, we wouldn't spend on advertising. And if we had an extra 90 million, um, we'd be collecting way too much taxes. And you know, and we should seriously reconsider how we're operating things. There's light at the end of the tunnel though. Um, there's a bill that's been co-sponsored and it looks, this Joe Cerici, uh, he's a pretty powerful character in the house. Um, and I think he, he's, he's got the gravitas to move this forward and get it seriously looked at. Uh, and they're proposing like a flat cost for the first year, 9,500 per student. That's too high in my, my educated opinion, um, but it, it would save us well over a half million. So it's a good place to start. And then they're talking about creating a formula going forward that would pay cyber charter schools, tuition more in line with what their books look like, you know, what their, what their actual expenditures are and, and limiting things that way. So this, this is, this is a really good development and, uh, both of these representatives were, were in the meeting the other day where, where we got to present, uh, Mr. Scaletta and I did. Um, so that brings me to the ESSER funds that I talked about, the, the, the second round of cares money. We think we're going to have to use some of that to pay this cyber charter bill. And you know, then we have plans, uh, this summer to talk about, uh, trying to reclaim more of our students that are out in cyber and bring them back into our own home run cyber school. There's a lot of benefits there. They can access our athletic programs. They can a- access our mental health services and counseling and so on and so forth. Plus they would have, they'd have a connection to, to the teachers in their community. So we're going to work on that, try to get that built down. And hopefully this, this reform or some reform will, will come through that will lower our, our cyber costs, which, you know, they're, they're high right now. And a lot of that's due to the pandemic. Um, so that's, that's the end of my report there. Uh, what I wanted to share. Oh, I have one more thing. Well, I'll just pause and, and, um, I'd be happy to, to talk further about anything you might be interested in on this topic.
Any questions from the board or discussion on Mr. Berlin's testimony in front of the Democratic Policy Committee?
Hi, Dr. Check. This is Tara. I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
Ken, is there anything that you would suggest specifically for the community to do to help with this issue? Like, are there petitions that we can, um, start? State representative calls? I don't know what those would be, but do you have any suggestions for us?
Yeah, so that, that's a good question. The, the, the most important thing citizens can do is contact the House Representatives and our PA senators directly. Email is great, but phone calls to really get their attention. And you know, if, if one or two people call, you know, three people, they'll write that off. But if a politician gets seven to eight phone calls on a certain issue, their hair is on fire. So that, and that's, that's the nature of the beast. So that, that personal feedback, talking to that person when they hear the story that, hey, this is what my property taxes look like and look how much of that money is getting dumped down the toilet. Uh, how, how come, you know, you, you say you're fiscally prudent and you claim not to raise taxes, but yet you force, uh, school districts into that situation of having to raise tax? Cause I, I mean, the two biggest pressers on the budget after salaries are charter schools and pension obligation, pension funding. Um, and just getting, getting a hold of that charter bill alone would give us a lot of breathing room.
I have a question, Ms. President.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
Uh, Mr. Berlin, so two things. One, would that, um, bill that you mentioned, would that run through the Education Committee that Kurt Sonny chairs? Or would that, uh, run through another committee? Do you know?
That, well, anybody can sponsor bills. This, this one would probably be negotiated in, in the Educa, Education Committee. But you know, the, the goal, regardless of how it gets created, the goal is to get it onto the floor. So I don't know if I'm answering your question. A bill could come through the Education Committee and Kurt Sonny, who's the head of the Ed Committee. He has actually, um, proposed bills before and he has another one ready that he wants to put out this year. Uh, he's, he said that charter school funding reform is, is, uh, one of the top things on his agenda.
Uh, the other question I had was about, um, the students that we do have that are enrolled in those various charter schools. You said about 60. Uh, do they typically leave our district in a younger grade and then just stay in a charter through high school? Or do we lose them in the high school teenage age? And is there anybody out there, since this obviously is not just a Wattsburg, you know, issue, this is nationwide? Is there any school district that's been successful in bringing students back? Are there any best practices for trying to reclaim students for the district?
Um, okay, yeah, that's, there's a lot there. See if I can hit it all. The elementary grades seem, we, we seem to lose the least at the elementary grades. And I think that's because of the labor intensive, um, task of teaching, you know, a child to read. Most parents don't feel comfortable with that unless they have an education background. But when you get into the middle and the high school, uh, then that's, we, we kind of lose kids all across the spectrum. And there doesn't seem to be, uh, a- any one unique pattern. A lot of these students though, uh, if cyber charters didn't exist, they probably would be homeschooled. And that's part of what i- is causing this to be economically so painful. A lot of homeschool parents realized, hey, I don't have to bear this burden alone anymore. I can get, you know, free internet, books, computer, uh, and what have you. And a ready-made curriculum for my child. Um, so you have the homeschool population. Then there's some people that, that want to stay remote because they might be heavily involved in travel league, sports and those kinds of things. But we do have a percentage of students that, that leave us, um, that a lot of times they're just done with the school system, you know, maybe we've, we've been working with them because their, their, their child needs intervention and we've been recommending, uh, them to come to school regularly. There might be attendance problems. Maybe they need, uh, some special assistance. And sometimes those parents are not receptive to that, um, that, you know, and, and they'll choose to go their own way. Uh, just because they, you know, they don't, they don't want to hear what our recommendations might be. And that's pretty common across the board, across the state. I've heard a lot of superintendents mention that. So that, I mean, this law gives, it, it gives them an option, which, which is good. I would feel better about it if it was a higher quality option. Um, I don't know that it's doing a, a, a real service. It's an injustice really, uh, to students that have many needs, but choose to take that path. I, when I was a high school principal, I used to call the charter, the cyber charter program, the step down program. These are kids that are at risk to drop out. So they talk their parents into, well, just put me in this cyber. And, and you know, they, they get a free computer, free internet, free books. And, and it just kind of gets the parents comfortable with the fact that the student isn't going to school anymore and they're around the house. And then eventually they just drop out of the cyber charter. So really it's a high school dropout program in my experience as a high school principal. I, I saw very few happy endings to students that went into the, down the cyber path. Did I get it all, Mr. Blazer? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, and thank you for your continued efforts to, um, advocate legislatively on behalf of the district and really on behalf of the, the entire Commonwealth. And kudos to you for being selected to testify and thank you for representing us so well. We're very fortunate to have you as a superintendent and also very fortunate to have your expertise in this area. Maybe some of your comments can be turned into action here pretty soon. And as you said, take a little strain off of our budget. So we're, we're hopeful.
Yeah, that, that would be, that'd be great. And I appreciate the, the kind words, Dr. Pushcheck. I have one, I want to share something positive. I don't want to be all doom and gloom. The last thing I want to do here is if you missed it, there was a story on, uh, the news last week about plans that schools have for summer school. about plans that schools have for summer school. All right, hopefully that's up.
The COVID-19 pandemic threw educators a major curve ball when Governor Wolf ordered a statewide shutdown of schools. The adjustment in learning resulted in nationwide trends, even showing in students at the local level.
What we've really seen in our district as as well as nationwide, right? Is students struggling in foundational reading skills.
Foundational reading skills are often taught with young children in an interactive way with hands-on manipulatives. And that proves to be more of a challenge in a virtual environment. We're also seeing trends as far as achievement in reading and math, where we're seeing growth in our students. But that growth is less than years prior when students were face to face.
As a result of these trends and a significant amount of lost time in the classroom, the Pennsylvania House of Representatives announced the possibility of summer school for students.
When it comes to extended learning, school districts are busy weighing their options.
Educators agree with the suggestion.
Summer school, I mean, that it's not going to be a popular choice for a lot of families. Because, again, they go on vacation, they have their plans, you have your summer sports teams and things of that nature. But again, we need to look at, you know, our our children, our future.
Regardless of what the House does with the the PA Assembly, we think that it's important to provide some intervention or remediation for our students that need it.
Wattsburg Area School District had plans for this in advance of the announcement, creating a five-week academic summer program for students in need of extra help.
We know as educators, the foundational skills that our students need to have in order to excel at the next level. And so we're really hoping hoping to focus on those core skills when our students come to us.
But some districts have their worries. Superintendent of the General McLean School District, Richard Scaletta sees the pandemic as a distraction to the learning environment already.
It could be an effective tool that we can use. But I think we also have to keep in mind that if all the conditions are still in place, masking, distancing, you know, all the protocols, which I think have led to some of the anxiety and some of the fatigue that has therefore transferred into learning. You know, I don't think it will be as effective as we would want it to be.
While in the planning and decision-making stages, districts are involving the thoughts of parents along the way.
One of the things that that we're really proud of right now is that we're creating a survey to get feedback from parents about what they believe will benefit their students most.
You know, just being able to partner with parents, really, that's our goal, is to partner with parents. We can't do that. Can't do this without them.
Odessa Meredith, your Erie.com.
All right, so I just wanted to share, you know, some positive PR that we got. And again, trying to to make sure our kids have what they need so that we can get back to normal here as soon as the pandemic permits. So I know I ran long, so thank you for that.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Berlin. And once again, this sets our district apart from others. We were way out ahead of the state planning for some recovery programs for the summer. So thank you, Mr. Berlin, Mrs. Kelly. Thank you for your efforts. You both did a wonderful job representing our district during those interviews. So thank you for your report, Mr. Berlin. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bendig for the Business Administrator's Report. Mrs. Bendig.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. I'll try to be brief. So for this evening, just a couple of treasures reports and a bill list. General Fund Treasurer Support Cash in the Bank as of February 28, 2021, Capital Projects at the end of February was $17.84. Cafeteria has a balance of $143,243,243.55. And checks already written since the last board meeting that totals $33,655.89. The rest of the reports will be ready for the board meeting next Monday.
Any questions for the Business Administrator? Mrs. Bendig, don't forget when we get to finance to provide an explanation of adding a resolution to the agenda to transfer the needed funds to the proper area for the heat pump project. Thank you. At this time, the next item on the agenda is legal advisement. The first item is discussion on vacant board member position. This position will serve the rest of Mrs. Pekovic's term, which is from the approval at a special meeting this evening until November. And then a new board member will be seated in that particular seat in December. Two citizens submitted their interest. That was Mr. Steve Morve and Mrs. Leah Heatherington. I would like to thank both of them for submitting their their letters and resumes and their interest. The process the board followed was we sent out the letters of interest and the resumes to the board. And then I asked each board member to send me their picks in order of their first choice and their second choice. So I'm going to share the results of that with the board. We'll have a discussion. And then we will need to come to a consensus on one of the two citizens to appoint to the seat. So, Mrs. Kelly, if you would please put up what we call the consensus matrix. And this will show the results from the various board members. So you can see that the board submitted their choices to me. You can see on the screen. Stephen Morve received eight first choice votes from the board. So at this point, having that on the screen, I'll entertain the discussion from the board. And I will note there is absolutely no discussion privately with any board members. I simply sent them the materials and they submitted their scores to me. So without objection, is the board comfortable to appoint Mr. Stephen Morve to the board seat? Any objections? When we get to the special board meeting, I will need a board member to add Mr. Morve's name to the agenda when we're at approval of agenda. And then we will vote at that time, consider Mr. Morve to serve the seat for Mrs. Pekovic. At this time, once again, I want to thank both citizens, Mr. Morve and Mrs. Heatherington, for their willingness to throw their hats in the ring, so-called ring, and appreciate their willingness to do that. So without objection for the special board meeting, immediately follow the work session. We will add Mr. Morve's name to the agenda for consideration at that time. And I thank the board for their willingness to go through this process and the dedication that they have to selecting a board member to fill the vacant seat. The next item is LA two. It's the Appointment of School District Labor Council. And just to remind the board, Mark Kuhar used to previously be in the practice of Knox McLaughlin, Gornall and Senate and the Knox Law Firm. He has his own practice now. And due to his extensive work with the district and his extensive tenure with the district, the board would like to retain his services, which means he will be switching from the Knox Law Firm. We would need to reappoint him under his own law firm. Any discussion on the appointment of the School District Labor Council? Attorney Christine McClure and the Knox Law Firm will be retained for all other legal matters. And we will retain Mr. Kuhar just specifically for labor matters. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
So I assume this is with all districts. Is there, what is the reason to have, I guess, two different councils? Why is labor separate from general counsel? Or is that just general practice?
It's general practice to have a specialty in labor relations. As you may know, we use Mr. Kuhar to help us negotiate our contracts to settle any labor disputes and labor issues. It's just calling on the expertise of specific personnel matters.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on LA two, Appointment of Schools District Labor Council? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your approval for next week. Those are the only legal advisement items we have for the work session tonight. The Chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushcheck for Finance. Mr. Pushcheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Finance for the agenda next week, beginning with F1, we'll be looking to approve the monthly budgetary transfer from the Budget versus Actual Report as outlined.
Any question or discussions regarding F1, the standard transfers? Hearing none, F1 will be on the agenda next week for the board's consideration.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Bendig.
I believe that F1 would also have the transfer from the unassigned fund balance to the capital projects for $900,000 for that project.
Okay, and does everyone understand that's going to be the money that we will transfer to cover the costs of the heat pump replacement at the elementary center? So since it is a budgetary transfer, it will be included under F1 transfers. And there'll be a separate item reflecting that particular transfer. Any questions for Mrs. Bendig regarding that transfer that we will include under F1? Well, that makes it easy. Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. Please continue, Mr. Pushcheck.
Yes, that does make sense to me as well. F2, regarding the Northwest Tri-County IU budget for the 2122 school year, we'll be looking to approve that budget in the amount of $62,555,592. And to further approve Wattsburg Area School District's contribution to the School Improvement Services Fund 20 budgets of the IU for the 2122 fiscal year in the amount of $37,280.06. And then $160,865 to the Special Education Services Consortium under Fund 23.
And I just wanted to mention that these numbers reflect a zero increase from last year. That's what I was told at when I attended the IU budget presentation. So these numbers are the same or very similar to last year. Sorry, Mr. Project. Any discussion on F2? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for next week. Go ahead, Mr. Pushcheck.
I'm just going to say that's all I have on the finance at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck. The Chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add B1 to next week's agenda. A motion to approve the heat pump project. I'll leave it to the administration for wording.
Thank you. Any discussion or further discussion? That was the sole item on our committee meeting held prior to this meeting. Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Paris.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for Personnel. Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items under Personnel for next week's agenda. P1, Kelly Substitute additions to approve Yvonne Bentley and Jennifer Lau as additions to Kelly Education Staffing Substitute List as outlined.
Any discussion on P1 Kelly Substitute additions? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
P2, a leave request added to the agenda to approve a leave of absence utilizing FMLA and sick personal time for Dana Miller beginning August 31, 2021.
Any discussion on P2, the leave request as presented? Hearing none, P2 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
P3, resignation, adding to the agenda to accept the resignation of Kathleen Noonan, Cafeteria Eight, effective March 8, 2021.
Any discussion on P3 resignation? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for next week for your consideration.
And P4, conference request to approve Eric Schultz to attend the Passbo Annual Conference virtually in March, funds from maintenance.
Any discussion on P4, conference request? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. So all four personnel items will be on the agenda for next week.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for Policy. Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. One item, PL1, to approve the first reading of the following policies. 137.1 Extracurricular Participation by Home Education Students. 150 Title Comparability of Services. 314 Physical Examination. 318 Attendance and Tardiness. 332 Working Periods. 334 Sick Leave. 340 Responsibility for Student Welfare. 810.01 School Bus Drivers and School Commercial Motor Vehicle Drivers. And 810.3 School Bus Drivers.
Any discussion on the first readings of the policies as presented under PL1? Hearing none, those policies as presented will be on the agenda next week for your consideration for first reading. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
You're welcome.
In the absence of a board member to cover Curriculum Committee at its work section, I would just like to direct your attention to C1, which is Science Pilot Program. C2 is a memorandum of agreement with Penn State. C3 is a homebound instruction request. C4 is Approval of Academic Services. C5 is the IU Education Leading to Employment and Career Training Program. C6 is the District Plans, which is the Comprehensive Plan, the Gifted Plan, the Induction Plan, the Professional Development Plan. C7 is the Approval of Alternative Education for Dispute Disruptive Youth Agreement. And C8 is Local Education Homeless Agreement. So there are eight items under curriculum for your consideration next week. Is there any questions or discussion on any of the eight items listed under curriculum? Hearing none, all eight items under curriculum will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for Technology. Mrs. Pound.
Thank you. I have nothing for technology this round.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for Transportation. Mrs. Lee.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I also have nothing for transportation next week.
And I also thank you, Mrs. Lee. The Chair recognizes Mr. Sean Mattson for Athletic and Extracurricular. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items this evening under Athletic and Extracurricular. The first one is AE1, the Athletic Resignation to accept the resignation of Dana Miller as First Assistant Cross-Country Coach effective February 22, 2021.
Any discussion on AE1 Athletic Resignation? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
Okay, and then AE2 Athletic Appointment to approve the following athletic appointments for the 202021 school year. Jeffrey Kimmy as Wrestling Second Assistant Coach Step 1. And Jerry Adamus as Baseball First Assistant Coach Step 2.
Any discussion on AE2 Athletic Appointment, other than adding a zero for 2020?
It's Josh.
Yes, Mr. Paris.
Why are we hiring a wrestling coach to finish out the school year when wrestling season is over?
Is Mr. Carter still on?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we would have hired him sooner. Again, the wrestling positions opened up very late. And then it just took him that much time to get his paperwork in. So I guess going forward for next year, we will have the position filled.
So this, is this for the current year? Is this retroactive hire for this year?
He was not able to coach because he didn't have his clearances and paperwork in. So once he got it in, it just came up to approve him. So it would be going forward.
So shouldn't we approve him for 2122 school year and not have him on this list?
Yeah, we could do that.
That was going to be my question. Is it preferable to just include him with his standard fall/winter?
Yep, that'd be fine.
Okay, so we're going to remove the wrestling coach, assistant coach, step one position. And we will include that when the time comes for the group approval of fall and winter sports season. Any further discussion on AE2 Athletic Appointment? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
Okay, thank you. AE3, the Wattsburg Area School District Volunteer to approve the addition of Yvonne Hamel to the Wattsburg Area School District Volunteer List.
Any discussion on AE3 Volunteer? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for next week for your consideration.
And then AE4, the Finish Link Timing System to approve the purchase of Finish Link Timing System Track and Field Automated Timing System with 14,300 of the purchase funded out of the athletic complex contingency as outlined.
Any discussion on the A discussion on the timing system. And again, this is money that was budgeted in contingency for the renovations of the stadium.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Paris.
Does this purchase? Complete the use of the contingency fund or there's still funds left?
No, that, that would be the end of it. 143 is what's left.
So. System costs more than 143?
It depends on what option you go with. The, um, the, the, the medium option, which a lot of schools around here are using. Is, is a little bit less than 14,000. The, the top system, I think, is closer to 17,000. So we were going to try to negotiate a little bit there and may, and maybe add some other funding from the athletic budget. If, if there's some extra left to, to get the best system possible.
Can I ask what would be the difference between the two? We know.
I believe, I believe it's a wireless controllers. The rest of the system would be the same.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blazer.
Is this the kind of item that Co-Stars would have a pricing, knowing that so many districts do buy this kind of equipment?
Yeah, we, we weren't able to find a Co-Stars vendor for, for this particular type of equipment.
Any further discussion on AE4? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
We have one item under miscellaneous. The Air Force ROTC Education Tour to approve the solicitation and sale of the ROTC Education Tour Foreign Trip to Ireland and Scotland in June of 2022. Provided that all criteria of policy 913 is met. And Mr. Berlin, if you can remind us what policy 913 entails with student travel?
Uh, yeah, so the criteria is outlined in 913. It, it, it applies primarily to travel outside the US, international travel. And basically it, it has to be a non-school sponsored trip where the students are, are funding, funding it exclusively. Themselves as their parents and it can't be associated, the trip can't be associated with the school district. So that's, that's what the policy reads. And I, I talked about this with Chris McClure, our attorney. Our general solicitor last week. And she said that, um, you know, as long as they meet the conditions, non, it, it's, it's non-school sponsored and not associated with the school. Then the, the group would be permitted to pursue international travel.
Any questions on the international travel? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration for next week. Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for Erie County Technical School. Mrs. Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. So we did have a meeting on February 25th, so I'll have an update for next week. Uh, Mr. Berlin, did you want to update anybody on the occurrences of our last meeting?
Okay, so there was, there was a motion brought in front of the, the Erie Technical School Board, the Joint Operating Committee, they call it. To, to send the renovation, the $32 million renovation plans out to bid. And there was quite a bit of discussion about that because Mill Creek came out and, you know, they're not, they've said that they're not going to commit funds towards the project unless the formula is changed or there's a guarantee that it will be changed for the next project. Right? And just based on the discussion. You know, I watched the meeting and I also talked about it with the other superintendents at our advisory meeting, monthly advisory meeting. It, it's, it's very unclear that this will move forward. So Mill Creek actually voted the motion down. Uh, and then, um, Ms. Mrs. Lee also voted it down, um, which I agree with. And until Mill Creek commits to funding a project, why would you spend more money to send it out to bid? It just seems like putting the, the cart before the horse. Uh, but so that's where we're at. I, I anticipate, the timeline is unrealistic. This, this is way too, I, I've been involved with, with traditional renovations and I, I don't think it's physically possible to get it out to bid and get everything back to start construction this summer, which is what the, the resolution proposes. So that's, we're kind of in a holding pattern at the, at the time being.
Any questions for Mrs. Lee? We'll look forward to your report next week. Thank you. Regarding the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit, I had sent an update out to the board from the last meeting that was held last week. And, um, that would serve as my report. I have nothing else to add. Brings us to board correspondence and dialogue. Anything from the board this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Josh, so moved.
Amanda, second.
And before we adjourn, just like to remind the audience, as soon as this is adjourned. I will call to order a special board meeting for the purposes of appointing a board member to fill a vacant seat. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The work session is adjourned. Thank you for everyone who attended our work session this evening. We will now call the special board meeting of March 8th, 2021 to order. May we have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Blazer.
Present.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mrs. Lee. Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Still here.
Mrs. Pound.
I'm here.
Mr. Pushcheck. Dr. Pushcheck.
Here, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Josh, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Josh, I'll make the addition of Mr. Morve to the motion for the vacancy.
Thank you, Mr. Paris.
Second, Jeremy.
So the agenda has LA1 reading to approve the appointment of Mr. Stephen Morve as a board member to serve the remaining term of the vacated office. By Julie Pekovic and her resignation or the appointment will be effective March 8th. So we will vote on the agenda with this addition. All in favor of approving the agenda with the addition, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, is there any community input regarding this item on the agenda? If there is, please put your name and address under the Q and A and I will recognize you for citizens comment. Any citizens commenting regarding the special board meeting item agenda? Seeing none, we will move on with our agenda. We have one item. That's the appointment of the board member for a vacated position. I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Stephen Morve as board member to serve the remaining term of office vacated by Julie Pekovic. Effective today, March 8th, 2021.
Bernie, so moved.
I'm here, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound for the second. Any discussion on the appointment of the board member for the vacated? Again, I would like to thank both citizens who submitted their names. I would like to thank the board for considering both names. If no further discussion, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pushcheck.
Yes.
Mr. Blazer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Mattson.
Yes.
Mr. Paris.
Yes.
Mrs. Pound.
Yes.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Yes, the motion carries unanimous selection for Mr. Morve. Congratulations, Mr. Morve. I did see your name on the call. I will be in touch with you prior to next week's board meeting. Any other items to come before the board at this special meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
Gosh, salute.
Thank you a second. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The special board meeting is now adjourned. I thank everyone for your attendance this evening. Have a safe trip home.